Good evening, everyone. I call this City Council to order. I have about 12 or 13 cards for open forum, but this item is on the agenda as well. So in past history, we have moved this to the actual item, so we haven't opened it in the forum. I recommend we do that again.
I think to keep continuity, I like to see it go during that session.
Okay, all right. So we will hold those off. I'd ask everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd ask the council approval of the minutes of the regular City Council meeting of June 9th, 2015.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. We have presentations, the update on the Metropolitan Airports Commission. Councilmember?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Today, we have a MAC Airport Planner, Neil Ralston. He's been very informative at our Noise Oversight Committee hearings, and what we'd like to do is just let the public know what the plan is for MAC for 2035, so we'll let him take charge here and tell us what things are happening at the airport.
Excellent. Well, good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. I am Neil Ralston, Airport Planner for the Metropolitan Airports Commission, and I'm here tonight to provide a brief progress update about the 2035 Long Term Comprehensive Plan that we're developing for the Minneapolis-St. Paul International Airport. Start tonight with a quick overview of the purpose for our long-term planning, then walk you through the ground that we've covered to date through our planning process, and then close out with some information about our stakeholder engagement program and the timeline for moving forward. Purpose for our Long Term Comprehensive Plan is to update our view of future facility needs for the next 20 years and to serve as a roadmap to guide our development strategy by shaping our seven-year capital improvement program for the airport. This plan's going to focus on assessing when facility improvements are needed in order to accommodate projected demand in a safe, efficient, orderly, and cost-effective manner that will continue to provide a high level of customer service. As a quick recap, our previous long-term plan for MSP was adopted by the MAC in July 2010 and used the year 2030 as its planning horizon. That plan concluded that the existing passenger terminal complexes and their landside facilities would not be able to accommodate projected demand without expansion. The recommended development strategy at the time was to balance passenger demand by replacing, or I'm sorry, by relocating non-Delta affiliated carriers from Terminal 1, that's the Lindbergh Terminal, over to Terminal 2, which is the Humphrey Terminal. Moving forward, we certainly need to ensure that our planning approach remains nimble and flexible in the midst of rapidly changing conditions in the aviation industry. We've committed updating our plans on a five-year cycle, so it's time to take a fresh look at our Long Term Comprehensive Plan and assess finding. From the outset, we've identified three primary goals for our plan. These represent the overall aspirations of what we hope to achieve in the planning process. Our first goal is that we will plan for future facilities that will maintain and enhance customer service experience while promoting operational efficiency and flexibility throughout our entire campus. Our second goal is to produce a plan that will promote fiscal viability, incorporate environmental stewardship, and infuse sustainable thinking while at the same time enhancing our competitive position in the marketplace. And last, but certainly not least, our third goal is that through the planning process, we will expand our effectiveness through external, strengthen external relationships and partnerships with our customers, our tenants, neighboring communities, and governmental agencies. So going to jump next into our aviation activity forecast that will serve as the backbone for determining our facility needs. This graph shows actual passenger traffic levels going back to 1990 along with our projections through the year 2035. So we're covering a lot of, a lot of time on this graph. For context, here for last year in 2014, we accommodated 9 million passenger originations. Now, originations are those passengers who are beginning their air journey at MSP, which was actually our all-time high for passenger origination. We accommodated 17 million total passenger employments. Now, employments are total passenger boardings, including originations and connecting passengers, which did not exceed our employment peak from 2005, but came close. By 2035, we expect to accommodate nearly 15 million originations and 27 million total employment. So we don't see any indications that passenger demand is going to slow down in the next 20-year period. Next, I'll shift over to aircraft operations, which are total takeoffs and landings. In 2014, we accommodated nearly 412,000 aircraft operations, which, as you can see here, is a significant reduction from our peak of 540,000 aircraft operations back in 2004. Looking forward, we expect aircraft operations to reach approximately 511,000 by the year 2035. So unlike passenger traffic, we do not expect to exceed our previous high mark for aircraft operations within the forecast period. The good news here is that our airfield appears very adequate to accommodate projected demand for aircraft operations without expansion. Tying this all together, here's a quick illustration of the trend in the average number of passengers on each departing airline aircraft. As you can see, between 2009 and 2014, the number of employments to departure rose from 79 to 91, which is an increase of 15 percent. We expect that our airline partners will continue to become more efficient as they move more passengers with larger aircraft than in the past, and our facilities are going to have to adapt to that trend. But again, we do believe that the airfield will be adequate from a capacity perspective throughout this 20-year planning horizon. After forecasting, the next step in the planning process is to assess the adequacy of our existing facilities to accommodate projected demand while meeting desired level of service goals. Key areas of emphasis for our facility requirements assessment include aircraft gates, terminal processing capabilities such as security screen checkpoints and baggage processing, concourse sizing, and of course, those front door items, public parking, and our departure and arrival curb fronts. From an aircraft gate perspective, our analysis indicates we're in relatively good shape through the early 2020s with existing and planned gates providing the flexibility we need to accommodate demand. When we fast forward to the year 2035, we believe we'll need up to 12 new gates at Terminal 1 and five new gates at Terminal 2 to accommodate organic growth in both of those facilities. Similarly, within the terminals, our analysis suggests that the processing facilities are largely adequate, with a few exceptions, to accommodate organic growth projected through the early 2020s. After that, several facilities at Terminal 1 do become increasingly strained, notably outbound baggage makeup facilities and our inbound baggage claims. But fortunately, we already have projects identified in our capital program to begin addressing some of these looming facility shortfalls. At Terminal 2, deficiencies are noted in the number of ticketing check-in positions and inbound baggage claim devices during the 2020s as well. Moving on to our landside facilities, again, those front door items to the airport, nobody's surprised when our analysis confirms deficiencies in parking capacity and the level of service on our curb fronts at Terminal 1 in particular. We believe that the new, that the parking demand projected for the year 2020 will be accommodated by the 5,000 space parking ramp that is now under design. However, analysis does suggest that several thousand additional parking spaces would be needed by 2035, likely triggering a future phase of parking ramp project. Meanwhile, we know that our Terminal 1 arrivals curb front is not providing a high level of service and in fact will reach near gridlock conditions by 2020. Over at Terminal 2, our existing parking infrastructure appears largely adequate through the early 2030s, but will need to enhance the curb front later in the planning period. As our planning team transitioned from facility requirements into identifying and evaluating feasible development alternative, we found ourselves facing a critical threshold question of how far do we can and should we go at Terminal 1 before preparing facilities to shift some or all non-Delta carriers over to Terminal 2? To address this question, we've developed an incremental approach for the full airlines relocate scenario. That was the recommendation of the previous plan. Going to show you a couple of development concepts that reflect the general direction we're headed with this plan. Now, this is not the final plan. It's still under, it's still being developed, but it shows you the direction that we're headed. This perspective shows the overall incremental development concept for a full build-out at Terminal 1 in the year 2035. First, it shows the location of the Phase 1 parking ramp under design along with the new parking exit plaza location and the relocation of the outbound roadway around the south side of the current post office facility. Also shows the location of our hotel development site. Now, the logical place to add capacity at Terminal 1 is to extend concourse G to the south, but in order to do that, we need to relocate the aircraft de-icing pad that is currently in that area. So this concept shows relocated aircraft de-icing pad closer to the runway end, which then allows us to extend concourse G to allow for eight additional aircraft gates. Actually, only five net new gates because we lose three gates that wrap around the end. So in this concept, we'd still be looking to relocate some, but not all non-Delta airlines over to Terminal 2 within the planning period. Rounding out the evaluation for Terminal 1, this graphic shows other facility improvements that would need to be considered to accommodate demand levels driven by a five-gate incremental expansion at concourse G. We already have several of these projects in the pipeline that will facilitate and support that expansion later in the planning horizon. And finally, here's what Terminal 2, Humphrey Terminal, could look like in this incremental airlines relocate scenario with a total of 12 new aircraft gates that accommodate both organic growth and overflow from Terminal 1. Within the terminal, we'd be looking at several improvements, including ticketing baggage claim and international arrival facility expansions, and the landside parking, and some additional curb front capacity. Plan will also include environmental, an assessment of environmental considerations associated with the recommended development program, and my counterpart Dana Nelson is going to describe the elements of that assessment.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. A very important, first of all, I'm Dana Nelson, the Manager of Noise, Environment, and Planning for the Metropolitan Airports Commission. A very important component of the Long Term Comprehensive Plan is the environmental considerations, and this will cover noise, air quality, water quality, climate adaptation, recycling, reuse, waste reduction, and then we'll also have a chapter that assesses land use compatibility with this. So to go over some of the noise assessment that we will be undertaking under this process, we'll have a 2014 baseline noise contour that we ran using actual operations that took place last year. We use the integrated noise model to generate these noise contours or a noise footprint around the airport, and we'll also be doing the same thing with the 2035, so that, that forecast horizon year will put those operations into the integrated noise model, and we'll be able to assess a future scenario and assess the difference between the baseline and future. We'll look at acreages inside each contour, and we'll also look at number of residential units, single-family and multifamily units inside each contour. So that'll be part of the document as well as assessing the land use inside the contours as well.
Beginning to close out here, our public outreach program is being conducted in three phases. First will be, we are meeting with stakeholders before the draft plan is finalized to provide information about the plan's purpose, process, preliminary findings, and timeline. This phase will end with a pre-draft public information meeting, which will be held later this summer. Second phase will be the formal public review period after the draft plan has been finalized and our commission has approved it for public distribution. We will be holding a 45-day written comment period later this fall with two public information meetings scheduled during that timeframe. And finally, after the public comment period closes, we'll incorporate feedback into the plan and prepare a final draft for our commission to adopt and for Metropolitan Council formal review. Going to wrap up here with the project timeline. We initiated this project back in January, and we have covered a lot of ground over the past few months. Our next step is to package the best concepts for improvements into a consolidated recommended development program. It will include a phasing plan and high-level cost estimates along with the, finalizing the environmental considerations review. And finally, we'll pull the documentation together into a final narrative report. Goal is to have the final plan ready for MAC adoption and Metropolitan Council review by the end of the year, perhaps extending into early 2016. So in conclusion, I hope that provides you with a sense of the progress that we're making with the Long Term Comprehensive Plan for MSP, and would be happy to stand for any questions.
Any questions?
Actually, yes, I just, a couple. First of all, this is really good to see, and I, we've seen some of these plans before, and I know you try to do a lot of planning. When I think about the whole parking issue, is there, what kind of review and what kind of analysis did you do for airport shuttle services, you know, to keep the parking down?
Well, we currently have several off-airport, off-airport providers that do provide shuttle services to the airport, so we assume that those uses do continue. We know there are some pressures on some of the land that those facilities are on in other communities, but we do assume that there will continue to be the demand for an off-airport parking product. We just did implement our new Quick Ride ramp at the airport. I'm not sure if you're familiar with that.
I'm talking more about shuttle service for people so they don't even bring their cars in. Shuttle services like Blue, you know, there's, there are shuttle services, and I use them in DC and all over the place, like Blue Shuttle, Go Green.
Like Super Shuttle.
Super Shuttle.
And those operators are currently at the airport and, and, you know, and being used by customers, but we don't see a lot of demand decreasing for people wanting to park their cars at the airport.
Price point, huh? And then about the hotel I saw there, how, how fast or what's the real time for something like that coming? I mean, an airport hotel is usually pretty advantageous.
Correct.
Mayor and councilmembers, my name is Bridget Rafe. I'm the Director for Airport Development at Metropolitan Airports Commission. We are currently negotiating an agreement with the hotel folks. Ideally, we will, they will complete design this year and start construction next year in early spring on the facility and then have it open in the fall of 2017.
Okay. Please.
I might have to call Dana back up. But the question is, a lot of residents here want to know what's really happening with airport noise? Are the airliners upscaling? Are we going to hear more noise with the increased traffic? Or are they actually putting more people on less planes, if you could answer that?
Sure. Madam Mayor, Councilmember Fitz Henry, they are what we're terming, upgauging the aircraft fleet, and this is a common trend that we're seeing for airlines across the United States where they're starting to phase out some of their smaller 50-seat regional jet aircraft, CRJ 200 is an example, and they're replacing them with some larger regional jets and narrow-body aircraft, so some CRJ 900s and your mainline Boeing 737, Airbus A320-type aircraft. Now, what this does is it decreases the number of operations because you can carry more people on fewer airplanes, and you might experience it when you're a traveler yourself, you know that they're starting to, not starting to, but they have been putting a lot more people on the flights. You see a lot less, fewer, or a lot fewer empty seats on the flights. The, in terms of noise impact, the 50-seat regional jets are some of the quietest in our fleet. A CRJ 200 is, is the quietest in our fleet of carrier jet aircraft types. So you are taking out, starting to phase out some of the quieter aircraft. However, the aircraft that they're being replaced with are not loud ones. They are newer technology. A lot of them actually in the 2035 forecast haven't even been certified yet. We're anticipating that we're going to get some very new technology aircraft by 2035, and because they haven't been certified yet, we aren't able to model the actual noise impact because they're not in the model. So what we're doing is we're taking a very conservative approach and modeling the aircraft types that we have, their predecessors in the, in the integrated noise model to model those. So I, hopefully they answered your question, councilmember.
Just one other question that you may not be able to answer, and that, but you've heard, people are always asking us, are they going to change the flight path ever, to your knowledge, from what we currently have? And if you could just speak that if you can, I know it's an FAA question, but maybe you can tell the public here what we expect in flight paths.
Madam Mayor, councilmember, we don't anticipate that any changes will come from flight path procedures as they are today. A big discussion centered around area navigation or RNAV a couple of years ago, specifically RNAV departures, and we feel that the airport here has a pretty good foundation of setting expectations for the Federal Aviation Administration, who is the entity in charge of flight procedures who would be coming in here and designing and implementing these new procedures. And our Noise Oversight Committee and the Metropolitan Airports Commission passed a resolution in 2013 that set expectations for the Federal Aviation Administration, which centered around involving the public and reaching out to the cities that surround the airport in the design and implementation phases, so we get adequate input from those communities and the residents and understand thoroughly what those changes would be. Now, we don't have any timeline for RNAV departure procedures. We have not heard from the FAA that they will be coming in and implementing them. I know that they are doing that at other airports, and I think as far as I know, MSP is at the bottom of their list. And we do have area navigation arrival procedures. Those are in place. They're overlays of existing, of what was existing prior to the implementation of those. And in terms of noise impact from a mitigation standpoint, I know that's a big topic in this city, we do have a plan going forward until the year 2023 where we have a consent decree amended to provide mitigation to homes that are within a higher noise impact area for three consecutive years. So if you meet that eligibility, the MAC will go out and provide additional mitigation. So we feel that we have a pretty good foundation of plan going forward in terms of mitigation.
Thank you.
Okay. That was really great. I appreciate you coming in. It's very informative. And I just want to thank Councilmember Fitz Henry again. He is our representative to, to do this, and it's fabulous to have him around here to keep track of that, him and Pam Demetranko, and keep us informed all the time. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Next, we're going to move to hats off to hometown hits. Councilmember Garcia, do you have your list?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Okay. Now, on the 25th of this month, a concert in the park at Augsburg Park will be Jeff LV Duo, and they're, they're really talented, and it's, it's kind of a, you know, it's a feel-good type of concert when there's two performers. And then on June 30th, there's something for the kids called Entertainment for Kids. It starts at noon, and it's at Augsburg Public, no, no, Augsburg Park. Anyway, that, it's for kids that are, you know, young kids and teens. Be sure to bring your lawn chairs and your bug spray. Starts at noon. And then there is a free home stretch workshop. So if you know of somebody that needs to buy a home and really doesn't have, you know, the background and doesn't really know what to ask or what to do or, or how to discuss financing or what have you, that it will be June 26th from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. That's a Friday, or Saturday, June 27th from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And if you would like more information, you can call 651-292-0131. Okay, here's another one. Free summer meals for kids and teens. They are going to, we will be serving breakfast and lunch, no questions asked, and that will be for kids and teens again. So call 612-861-9361. Okay, let's see, what else I wanted to say? Yeah, we received a really nice note from our, the Human Rights Commission bestowed on Russ King, Ms. Richfield, 1981, Citizen of the Year, and she wrote all of us, I think, a nice little thank you card. But I want to read too, one little bit of it. It says, "Please rest assured that I am both honored and humbled by receiving this award. I truly sing the praises of my hometown as I travel nationally and internationally." Really, a very, very nice card, and I never knew how many people really went to her concert and enjoyed it and went year after year after that. So good for, good for the Human Rights Commission. The other thing I wanted to mention was that the mayor and Councilmember Howard and I visited Flex Academy ribbon-cutting ceremony, and we just want to say that it was such a welcoming school. It's a school that, that's got a lot going for it, and we really appreciate the fact that they're in our community, they're doing a good job in setting up, and it's kind of like a charter school, there's no tuition, and you'd learn one-on-one or one-to-one, and you can do classroom and also online learning. This is a great opportunity for Richfield. I mean, we're, it's incredible at how well they're, they're doing and how well they're setting up, and the main concern of theirs is the student, the learner. That's number one. So, and I believe that that's all I have.
Well, I just want to add to that Flex Academy, because I was there, is they're, they are taking applications for middle schoolers, so they will have a high school program soon. I would recommend if you're looking for something, some kind of alternative, this was a really incredible school. They've really redone that whole Bally's Inside. It's a fabulous opportunity. Public schools, the condition, the regular traditional public schools are not for every single kid. This may be the right opportunity for your, your student or perhaps one of your grandchildren. Please keep that in mind when you look around at schools. And I have some more things, but I'll, I'll send it on down the line here. Councilmember Howard?
Sure. I just had one item. I just wanted to update folks. I think some folks are aware, but of a positive development at the legislature, largely thanks to our state representative Linda Slocum. She was successful in getting funding for the underpass in the bonding bill that just passed in the special session, and I think it's a really important step forward for the city, and just wanted to make sure folks were aware of it.
Yeah.
And I'm glad she never gave up.
Yes, she didn't. Nine years we've been chasing that since I've been mayor.
But I mean, it, it did take, you know, some little smarts to get that done.
Last-minute little shuffle. Yes. We're very grateful for her. Councilmember?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to let everybody know Wendy's is open.
Oh, okay.
So you can hit Wendy's now and put your money in Richfield, and also, we'll see everybody on the 3rd and 4th of July at Street Dance. Awesome time for Richfield residents to get back together and say hi, and council will be in the 4th of July parade again.
And, and the family night is July 2nd. They have the movie in the park. That's always fun. So I encourage everybody to do that. There might need to be a few more volunteers, too. Some of the late shifts are always hard. If you can put in an hour or two over there helping out, it's a really fun, and you'll see so many of your neighbors there. That's a really fun thing to do. So I, I really enjoy that. There's also a car show on July 3rd, too, if you want to come over to the car show. I do want to remind you, though, people, on July 4th, Fri, that's a Saturday, the farmer's market will not be then, down at the pavilion on that day. That's my understanding. So I wanted to let people know. There's a couple of things, and I just have been remiss to bring these in and pass them along. This is in, in service to the League of Minnesota Cities, I was appointed to the Governor's Tax Reform Advisory Group for the local government aid. This was, we redid that entire formula, and it came out incredibly fruitful and was very impactful for the governor's group, and I was presented this plaque of, of award for my service. There was a lot of time spent down at the Capitol looking at that and figuring out how to be fair to all types of cities when local government aid is passed out, so I want to pass that down, and I believe that goes to the city somewhere. They store these things. This one will have to go to ULI. This is a grand award from the American Civil Engineering Council. This is awarded to LHB and the Urban Land Institute, but this was the committee that I served on that, that provided the Regional Indicators Program, and we are part of the Regional Indicators Program with the Green Step Cities. Richfield was one of the first foremost cities that did some of this initial work, and I was there as one of the mayors to accept this award, and I'll be taking it to ULI next. Thank you. next, thanking them for letting us do this. They helped us get the grant dollars that made this. This will be a statewide initiative now, and grant funding will, all cities will have the regional indicators, and they'll have the opportunity to have their carbon footprint measured, and that information to, for them to use, to try to address issues in their own city. So I'll pass this down for people to look at, and I'll take that to ULI with me.
I wonder if I can white out the name?
Can you? One other, I just want to have a quick conversation about, I had the opportunity to go visit with some folks on East 66th Street.
Oh, excuse me, Mayor. Could I do this first?
Certainly. Go ahead.
Okay, well, the mayor had this before her, and I just thought I would read it and let people know. One of the things that's really important, that a mayor has to know a lot of people and has to know how to do things and has to learn a lot of things. And one of the reasons why I think that Richfield is doing well is because, you know, she cares about the city, and she got involved in the regional issues. She's actively involved with the League of Minnesota Cities, with Metro Minnesota, is that it?
Metro Cities, Metro Council.
Metro Cities. She has served on, you know, the Governor's Task Force, has done a number of things to make sure that, you know, that we have a voice and that we have a presence and that we're not going to be, you know, run over by anyone. So this is Building One America, and they're all about inclusion, sustainability, and economic growth. Anyway, they say to Mayor Gotal, "I am pleased to inform you that Building One America will honor you at our third national summit on inclusive suburbs and sustainable regions in Washington, D.C., July 23rd through the 24th at the Georgetown Law Center. They chose you for a special recognition to receive the Inclusionary America Award because of her outstanding leadership and steady fast courage in the struggle for a fully inclusive society." There's an awful lot of more information, but we just wanted, you know, to say thanks because, you know, they have recognized the significance and the valuable contributions you have made to this city and also in working with other cities in, you know, so you've really been there and learned a lot. And thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, I appreciate that. Thanks. I just want to say that this wasn't all my doing. It's kind of like that underpass project. I think it takes a team to do any one of these things. We all work together. City staff support us a great deal, and council members here help a lot, too. So I just want to think that it's good for Richfield to get some publicity. I'm not so big about the words, but I'm really big about Richfield getting the publicity. We deserve it. We do things right, and we do them well, so. 66th Street, I just wanted to talk about this, and I've had a brief conversation already with the city manager about this, but it was a great learning opportunity for me. I was on East 66th Street on the north side between Nicolet and Portland, and of course, that's part of the reconstruction area. And I went and talked to some residents who were concerned that they didn't really understand the impact that was really going to happen to their property with the reconstruction. And so we are trying our hardest to make sure that everybody understands what's going on there. And I know we sent five open house notices out to those residential areas, and so we are really trying hard. We're also announcing it from here. I know that it's posted in the paper. And so I went back and dug deeper, and I said, "Why didn't you understand this? What was the problem?" And they said, "They saw that the road was going to be reconstructed, and they saw that sidewalks were going to be in, but they thought they were going to be the way kind of that they were, that it wasn't going to be such a big deal, and they didn't understand the impact." And we went back to them, and they said, "Well, in the paper, they put down the streetscape, but they didn't talk about how far up, you know, that there's going to be cycle track, there's going to be a six-foot sidewalk. So when they got the plat drawing from the county, that was very different." So I've had conversations about this, because Councilmember Elliott and I did the west side when that issue came up, and we had gotten through those doors, I think, three times. So people were very well aware. I was out door knocking through my campaign over there. I talked to a couple of people. There was only a couple of people really aware about it, and they didn't share it with their neighbors. They had gone to the open houses and not. So first of all, I want to implore you, when you get one of those cards and you're not sure if it's really impactful, don't just think that it maybe not. Call. If you call, somebody will talk to you. And also, I think, when we look at somebody like just on 66th Street, I think the next rounds we do, we're going to send a letter out that shows them a little bit more. What's happening to some of those folks is that some of their lawns are going to have to be regraded, you know, several, just only several yards from their front door because of ADA requirements, and it may disturb trees. So trees may have to go, and new trees can be planted. But they didn't even understand that new trees could be planted and other things. So we learn a lot, and we're going to go back and talk to those residents, because we'll get better at this as we go further. But we haven't had some of these large construction problems, projects in a very long time. But I do implore people, when you see that card and you're not quite sure, would you please just give a call? Because somebody will come out and talk to you, somebody will show you the stakes in the ground, and somebody will talk to you about some of the project that might impact your property, not just your right of way. So that's what's happening with those folks. So it's not a huge amount of folks, but every person matters in the city of Richfield. So I think it was a good learning experience for us.
You know what I would suggest, too, is that, you know, I like a lot of websites because they'll have FAQ, frequently asked questions, and that might be a good way to, you know, to get their attention, too.
Yeah. That might not hurt, but I think some of these elderly might not have that access. Some of us do. Some of us do. So I appreciate that. Any other comments on our questions? I'll move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The agenda is approved. We have the consent calendar. Council, excuse me, city manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. For those in the audience, the consent calendar contains several separate items, which are acted upon by the city council in one motion. And once a consent calendar has been approved, the individual items and the recommended actions have also been approved, and no further action on those items would be necessary. Tonight, there are, I believe, five items on the consent calendar, and starting off with item A, which is consideration of the approval of a second amendment to the site lease agreement at 7401 Logan Avenue South and at the water tower between the city of Richfield and Sprint Spectrum Realty Company LP with regard to the location of an antenna system. Item B is consideration of the approval of a reservation of funds financial policy. Item C is consideration of the approval of an annual request for a temporary on-sale intoxicating liquor license for the activity scheduled to take place on July 4th, 2015 for the Minneapolis-Richfield American Legion Post 435 located at 6501 Portland Avenue South. Item D is consideration of the approval of an annual request for a community celebration event license with a fee waiver and a temporary on-sale intoxicating liquor license for the Fourth of July Committee for the event scheduled to take place at Veterans Memorial Park, July 1st through July 5th, 2015. And finally, item E, consideration of the approval of the lease agreement between the city of Richfield and the United States Postal Service for the use of 14 parking spaces at the lower parking lot of the Wood Lake Nature Center. And that concludes tonight's consent calendar.
I'll move the calendar.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Councilmember Howard, item six.
Item number six. It's a public hearing regarding the approval of new on-sale intoxicating liquor and Sunday licenses for GM Richfield LLC, DBA Four Points by Sheraton Minneapolis Airport located at 7745 Lindale Avenue South. On May 4th, 2015, the city received the application materials for new on-sale intoxicating and Sunday liquor license for GM Richfield LLC, Four Points by Sheraton Minneapolis Airport at 7745 Lindale Avenue. GM Richfield acquired Four Points by Sheraton Minneapolis Airport from Financial Guidance Incorporated on May 15th, 2015, and is applying for on-sale intoxicating liquor and Sunday licenses. The previous owner, Financial Guidance Incorporated, had on-sale intoxicating and Sunday licenses for Four Points by Sheraton Minneapolis Airport. The public safety background investigation has been completed. The results of the investigation are summarized in an attachment to this report. The public safety director has reviewed the background investigation report. None of the information in the report would cause the public safety director to recommend denial of the requested licenses. All required information and documents have been provided. A prorated fee for the duration of six months has been received. And so, to open up the public hearing?
Yep, we'll open the public hearing. Would anyone like to come forward to speak on this? Is anyone here from Four Points? Would like to come up and just say hi and get some good publicity? Come to the mic and say hello and introduce yourself? Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Hello, my name is Victoria Nelson. I'm the regional manager for the Four Points by Sheraton. Here in Richfield, we are new owners as of about 30 days ago, and very excited about the property, and invite you all to hopefully come for a cocktail later. Does anybody have any questions regarding?
I hear you have a good omelet over there.
Yes, we have a fabulous omelet.
That's what I...
We're the coupons.
Did you bring coupons, Adam?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
This is a public hearing. Would anyone else like to come forward?
I'll move to close.
Second.
Hearing no other, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Public hearing is closed.
And so my motion is to approve the issuance of new on-sale intoxicating liquor and Sunday licenses for GM Richfield LLC, DBA Four Points by Sheraton Minneapolis Airport located at 7745 Lindale Avenue South.
Second. Any other conversation, please?
Just a discussion. I might have to get our city attorney involved in lieu of the new change with the Sunday liquor law. By approving these, if we change the ordinance, are they retroactive so they can? Okay. And are we in conversation or plans on changing that?
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Councilmember Garcia, you have item seven.
Okay, this is consideration of a resolution regarding land use approvals that would allow construction of a community benchell at Veterans Memorial Park. You know, and I know that we've got folks that want to speak. I would suggest that if we had maybe three opponents and three proponents, and that would mean 18 minutes, I believe. So I don't know if the council would be okay with that, or if they have another suggestion.
We've had, we've had public hearings already. This isn't a public hearing. I would be okay with that.
Well, how many, how many people have signed up?
14.
I'd like to hear them all say something, yeah.
If folks are here, anything?
No clapping, no, no, no. Please, order, order. I need silence, please. There's no clapping, and if you start clapping, I'll have to close the public hearing. If you do anything, there's no outbursts like that whatsoever allowed in here. You'll have to ask people to leave if you do.
Madam Mayor, if people are here to speak, I'd appreciate hearing from them.
Okay.
Okay.
That's, that's fine. Okay, first, let me do this. Should I do this, or should we hear from folks first?
No, we usually read first.
Okay. Okay, so, "The city of Richfield has long planned for an outdoor performance facility. The 1985 Veterans Park Memorial Master Plan identified a desire for a 1,500-seat amphitheater to support an expanded summer concert schedule and finally, an outdoor performance stage is identified as a potential park improvement for Augsburg Park in the city's 2008 comprehensive plan." So the preparation of these policy documents involves significant input from the community. At the direction of the city council, a benchill committee was established by this Community Services Commission in August of 2011, and we have some members here, and David Butler has been instrumental in helping us, and Rick Jabs is chair of that task force. A capital campaign visibility study conducted by the Excelsior Group found that there was support for the public park system in general, including the concept of building a benchell. There were surveys conducted, and the city council then adopted a resolution to, okay, a resolution to officially declare Veterans Park as a preferred benchill site over Augsburg Park in the Lindale Garden site. A new planning fundraising benchill task, tax, tax force was formed in February of 2014. The group has met approximately once a month to discuss issues related to moving the project forward. You know, and I'm going to, I'm going to let maybe Jim, should we, you know, the staff or John Stark? Okay. But let me say one thing, you know. First, there's no, there was never going to be a duplicate benchill, never. What the Met Council decided, and along with the folks from Lindale Garden site, was that it would just be a performance stage. It would be a slab of cement, kind of like what we have at Augsburg Park. It was never slated to be a benchill in the way that we do benchills. The other thing is Karen from Wood Lake Nature Center, what's her last name?
Karen.
Shrogg, yeah. You know, she didn't have to be in this task force, but, you know, she volunteered, and we felt we needed someone with her background. And she's, she's got a PhD. I mean, this is a woman that, that really, I believe, knows all the issues regarding this, and she has worked very, very hard. So I think when we're, you know, for, if you serve in a task force or a committee, and then you, you know, you get, you know, intimidated by another group, you know, these people are serving because we asked them to serve, and they're doing a good job. And quite frankly, I think we could have been a lot more respectful in this process. I know, I know we made some mistakes, but I hope that, you know, that this is going to work out. I also wanted to bring to your attention, I've got to drink water. I tell you, those allergy medications will do that. There is a website that's called, it's www.facebook.com/mark. I Support the Richfield Minnesota Benchill. Minnesota has the only capitals there. And this is, folks that got together to support the benchill because they believe in it. And the city has absolutely no input to this website, and...
Quiet, quiet in the gallery.
These are citizens that are on their own, on their own, like the other group came together to take care of this. And I really appreciate that we have the freedom, you know, to do our, to take care of business, whether you agree with something or disagree with it. The thing is, it's, it's all a matter of let's work together. So I'll turn it back to you, Mayor.
I believe that John Stark, you were going to...
Oh, yes, that's right.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor and city council members. I just want to point out that what this particular item is, is for the land use approvals for the site. for the site. And when we talk about land use approvals, there's kind of a hierarchy. There's the comprehensive plan. It's the community's long-range plan for the community. This was put together about eight years ago with a lot of community input, and it did identify a band shell in the Veterans Park as a potential use. And the the comprehensive plan designation of this site is park, and a band shell is a in allowed use in that comprehensive plan designation. So, after the comprehensive plan, the next item down the hierarchy is the zoning ordinance. This particular use of band shell is a use that would be permitted in the zoning district that it's in. And so, just off the bat, the first thing staff does is go in and say, does it comply with the comprehensive plan? In this case, it does. Does it comply with the zoning? In this case, it does. That's why what we're here tonight talking about is called a site plan approval. That's further down the hierarchy. And as you go down this hierarchy, there's really less discretion at the city council level or the planning commission level to say no. You know, normally, this is a little bit different situation because the city is the kind of the regulatory body and the applicant. Normally, what we would talk about in a case like this is the applicant's kind of vested land rights, that the applicant would have some rights to use their property in a way that's consistent with the comprehensive plan and is consistent with the zoning. And again, if this were a case with a with a different applicant that wasn't the city, that's probably what I would be here telling you is that you don't wouldn't have a lot as much discretion on a site plan approval as you would considering a comprehensive plan revision or rezoning. Having said that, then, you know, we with a site plan approval, we go and look at a lot of the quantitative things, a lot of the kind of detailed, the technical details about the site. We look at things like building setback, building height, the bulk of the building, the lot coverage, the how much of the surface is covered with impervious materials, and all of those kinds of things. This proposal meets all of those things. So, there really isn't any, there wouldn't be any basis for staff to recommend denial based on on those things. The next thing we would look at is parking. For this proposed use, you know, the code stipulates that for X type of use, for Y type of use, for Z type of use, there has to be so many spaces per seat or per square foot or those kinds of things. In this one, the code would require ninety parking spaces. Now, at Veterans Park, there are two hundred and eighty-five parking spaces, so there are about three times the required spaces. Now, certainly, there are other uses there. There's the playground, there's the hockey, the ice arena. But it's it's anticipated that because the city controls what uses are going on when, that there shouldn't be many conflicts. Certainly, there will be occasional small conflicts, but I can't imagine having a large event at the ice arena the same day and time that a large event would happen at a band shell because we control both of those things. So, parking is not something that the city staff could recommend denial based on that. And then finally, noise is the last thing we would look at on a use like this. And what we're recommending is that all band shell performances would be conducted by a permit through the Recreation Services Department. A staff member of the Recreation Services Department would need to be present at all performances and will monitor the use of sound equipment and noise levels to ensure compliance with city codes. A noise monitoring device will be required to be stored at the site at all times, and noise measurements will be taken by city staff at intervals throughout each performance. No performances will be permitted beyond ten PM or earlier than seven AM unless approved by the city council through a community event license. So, those are the critical issues. There are some smaller issues about landscaping and those kinds of things. And when I'm talking about landscaping, I'm talking about like parking lot screening or screening the band shell that that we revisit in the resolution. But I know that to a lot of the residents, this is a very controversial topic, and it may be controversial on a lot of fronts. On the land use approval side, there it's fairly black and white to me. So, with that, I would answer any questions you might have.
Would question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Would we be able to put up on just sort of some of the screens, just what some of the what's in our package so for the public to kind of see what what the the site plans actually look like?
And maybe Jim can go through those.
Thank you.
Madam Madam Mayor and council members, yeah, I'll put up a number of building elevations and some of the more major site plans here. And feel free to ask, stop and ask questions if you need more details. We have our architect, David Lanier, here as well that can kind of further explain it. So, I'm going to lay these right on the. This is our latest design. It differs than the concept that we had originally with with our former architect. It makes use of materials that are less expensive, and that's been our challenge and our issue is that because of poor soils, we've had to really look at redesigning this to make it less expensive. And so, the most noticeable thing is the roof. The roof is a gable roof instead of a rounded roof, and instead of having exposed decorative beams that could be seen, the beams are covered with a, you know, a ceiling, and we can use just regular building trusses that are much less expensive. The building also is another major cost savings of this building is the stage is made out of a composite material as as opposed to a concrete slab on grade, which would require more foundation support. So, it's a lot less expensive. And at the planning commission meeting, we heard a lot of criticism that the design was, you know, wasn't very nice looking. And so, we've touched it up a little bit in the meantime, presented this design to the band shell task force last Saturday, and they they liked it and approved of it. Give you a couple of other building elevations. You can see that the that the roof is slightly sloped to project sound. It's got an open back to it, and future storage areas on the sides. Another look at it. Now, I'll go to the site plan. In the site plan, you see the arena parking lot, Frontage Road to the left, and the band shell is in the center of the the picture, connected to the perimeter trail that goes around the pond. And the the hill slopes up towards the south southwest, and that's basically how the band shell is oriented. We chose that orientation because it's ideal for both the performer and the audience as far as the sun setting, and it gives them the the most amount of protection from the sun. And we've angled it a little bit so that it doesn't project directly into the southern neighborhood, and it that berm really helps on muffling the sound. This sheet is our parking plan, and as you can see, that there are a number of parking spaces available, not only in front of the arena, but we have an arrangement with the American Legion that for overflow parking. We've done this through our games with the magicians, and it's a great relationship we have with them. They like the added potential for customers, and they have a lot of capacity in their lot. As in addition, there's it's also within walking distance of the northern parking lot. And like John indicated, the Recreation Department controls all the scheduling, all this organized scheduling of of these areas, and so, we are completely in control of what we schedule at the same time. We have this all automated on automated registration reservation software, and it's entirely possible for us to be consistent on making sure that we don't have simultaneously large events there to, you know, make parking an issue. Is there other other information in your pack that you'd like to?
Question, council member?
You said you changed the design with materials and that. I'm questioning what would the sustainability be like with these different materials? As far as longevity?
Yes.
That sort of thing? Well, I might ask our architect to come, but, you know, we're choosing materials that we've seen in other band shells that have been around a long time. Specifically, we looked directly at the Bloomington Band Shell, and a lot of the recent design is based on what we saw there. Can you help me along with that, David?
Please introduce yourself.
David Lanier, architect, David Lanier Architects. The flooring, the raised flooring is a composite material that is, I think it's like a twenty-year life on it, which will hold up better than concrete in terms of cracking and maintenance and but not even if even if concrete was a a consideration, but it's really not because of the soils and the extra piloting that would be required for for something like that. The the roof is just a asphalt shingle roof, twenty-five year, you know, thirty-five year roof, whatever we can we can afford in the package, so but that'd be easily re-riffable. Exterior materials are mostly pre-finished or pre-colored concrete masonry units, decorative ones, and whatever siding that we put on the on the the building will somewhat depend on the budget and a little more study, I think, on on the looks. But it could be like a a smart siding, a composite siding, something that doesn't make it be pre-finished and not require paint and painting, stuff like that.
Could I ask just one other?
Sure.
Do you have any idea what the city might need to maintain this, you know, an annual because of these materials and that? Or is there a possibility we'll have issues with graffiti that we can't get off or?
No, I haven't really looked at any studies of what it costs per per year. It's, you know, our time involvement has been somewhat limited until we're officially hired, but graffiti, that is something that I guess we'll, you know, take a look at in terms of the concrete block and the finish of it. That'd be the the main main question I'd have.
Okay, I will make the motion. Okay, here we go. For the consideration of a resolution.
To approve.
Oh. Okay, wait a minute, wait a minute. I'm at the wrong place here. Oh, recommend, okay. I move that we approve the resolution allowing construction of a community band shell at eight hundred sixty-sixth Street East Veterans Memorial Park.
And I'll second, so we can have discussion at at this time. I would entertain the open forum for a few minutes for the for the folks to do this. I want before we call anybody up, I just want to say that we are allowing everyone to come up here. We will give you three minutes each. We expect that everybody in the audience will be respectful. That means no clapping, no jeering, no outbursts, nothing of that, of course, so and please hear people out. If you do have outbursts, you will be escorted out of the chambers and asked to leave. So, with that, I will call up the first one again, three minutes. The first person is Kevin Close. And please state your name and make when you're done, please fill out, I think there's a sign-up sheet, you can fill that out afterwards.
Okay. My name is Kevin Close. I'm the I grew up in Richfield. I'm a former Richfield High School graduate. I played in the marching band and the jazz band. I was in the Arts Commission for many years and chaired that for a while, volunteer with Minnesota Magicians right now, so that's really fun. I just wanted to make three quick points. Oh, and my mom and my sister still live in Richfield, so I have lots of Richfield ties. So, I made just three quick points. One, Oxbury Park is very limiting for concerts and performances. The Arts Commission used to host the Concerts in the Park Series, and we found that in a lot of instances, the parking lot wasn't big enough when there was more popular bands there, and we also found that it was really hard for the seniors to get down the hill. A lot of them were kind of unstable, so they had to stick up top. So, just all in all, we were thinking like actual band shell would be better. Point two, Vets Park is the main gathering space for all the community events in Richfield. I could spend three minutes just naming events, but Honoring All Veterans Memorial Day, that'd be really cool with the band shell and the military band. Fourth of July, we all know about that. Unity in the Community, the Farmer's Markets Event, Urban Wildland 5K, the Richfield Arts Center events. All in all, it would be really cool to have that music and theater component right there in the park. And along with that sixty-sixth development, there's going to be an east-west biking trail like right to the park that I think a lot of people end up using. So, I think that would be really great, too. And I guess my third point is change can be scary. When I think back to when the Portland Roundabout was being created and vetted, a lot of people freaked out about that and were upset about that, some valid reasons, some not-so-valid reasons. But in the end, it turned out to be a really great traffic corner with a lot less accidents. And another thing, just the Honoring All Veterans Memorial, remember that, too? It was supposed to have a big environmental impact on Vets Park, as well as there was a lot of worry that every it was going to get graffitied up and be really bad. None of that's happened, and a lot of people love the Honoring All Veterans Memorial, and a lot of people come out just to see that. I think once the band shell's in place, it'll make a lot of foot traffic into the malt shop and the Legion and the mini golf, and it'll make this everything a lot better and more fluent in Vets Park. So, I say, let's do this and go for it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next one is Sue Sandal.
Thank you. My name is Suzanne Sandal, address seventy-six oh-one Bryant Avenue South, and the toughest thing about being up here is I don't get to vote anymore. Having served sixteen years on the city council, one of the biggest comments I would make is I don't think we've ever done anything in Richfield that was a major project that didn't have some opposition. And I think all of us have seen it over the years. I was on the city council when we had Best Buy, and that was a huge issue. We had numerous people speaking in favor, speaking against it, but the one observation I would make is that overall, whenever we have completed a project, by and large, the people are really appreciative, and they really do think that at the end of the day, it's an improvement for the whole city, which is what I think a band shell would be for our community. And I understand that some of the neighbors aren't happy about it, and some people aren't happy about it that maybe don't even live nearby. But I think long term, we will all enjoy it. I think Kevin Close said it really well. This was a benefit for the entire community, and I would hope you would support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Cynthia Nancy Norton. Again, if you're both coming up, it's still three minutes. Just one of you. Okay. And your name?
Hi, my name is Nancy Norton. I live at one thirty-two E sixty-sixth Street. I read in the Current Sun that at a previous city council meeting, the land for the Veterans Park was donated with the express instructions that the land be kept, open space. Park was donated with the express instructions that the land be kept, open space as it currently is today. Our veteran park today embraces wildlife and open space and meets the donors' wishes of this land. Legal ramifications should result if the City of Richfield develops anything on this precious donated Veterans Park open space land. I support having the City of Richfield work with the developers of the planning of the Lindell Gardens area and constructing an outdoor concert facility, which is only a few miles from the Veterans Park. This would also save the city well over $555,000 in initial expenses and on ongoing maintenance if the bandshell is not built on the donated land in the Veterans Park. The city could then take that money and spend it to update all the other parks in Richfield and plant the 100 trees on Portland that Richfield was never able to replace when they redid Portland Avenue. Again, I would like to discourage the consideration of the donated land with the express instructions that it be kept open space, wildlife protected, in the Veterans Park, and I support the Lindell Gardens area as an outdoor concert facility. Thank you.
Thank you. Jan LaVictoria.
Sorry about that. Hi, my name is Jan LaVictor, 6301 York Avenue South. Excuse me. I just want to say that throughout this process of opposing the bandshell in Vets Park, I've learned quite a lot, and frankly, have been completely appalled by the behavior of both the Bandshell Task Force, Richfield City Council members, and Mayor Gattel. I have witnessed a bandshell task force member trying to incite a citizen into a physical fight. I have seen City Council members hide behind your computers while we're talking, rolling your eyes, having side conversations yourself, and cutting off speakers, telling them to wrap it up long before their time is done. You have never listened with any seriousness to the grave and passionate concerns of the citizens who vehemently oppose this project. Instead, you have lied, again rolled your eyes, called us crazy, and do everything you can to intimidate this group. Mayor Gattel even had the audacity to bring two police officers to her monthly open forum, saying, oh, they just happened to be there. An officer was overheard saying in his walkie-talkie, "They are approaching." Seriously? What does that mean? That doesn't mean they just happened to be there, it means you asked them to be there. There were two people at that meeting. One has a bad hip, I don't think she's walking with a walker tonight, I don't think she's going to be a threat to anybody, and there has never been any threat to anybody on the council. I think it speaks directly to you, saying that you're an open and approachable mayor, and I think that's not true at all. This has been the absolute best example of the worst kind of adult behavior. Adults that should not only know better, but representatives of a democratic process, which you have made a mockery of. A vote for this bandshell is nothing more than a vote to satiate the overweening egos and has absolutely nothing to do with bringing anything positive to Vets Park or the City of Richfield.
Steve LaVictory.
Howdy, I'm Jan's brother, Steve LaVictor. I pronounce my name that way because it's easier, right?
Okay.
Anyway, yeah, I really just reiterate what Jan said. Yeah, I stopped Tom Rubline from getting into a fight with the guy at the Bandshell Task Force. He came, he stood up like, what did he say? He goes, "I'll kick your ass, kick your ass." So I had to stop it. I was at the Town Hall meeting when we were talking about the Bandshell Task Force, and Edwina Garcia and Tom Rubline came in and destroyed the democracy of the four state senators and politi, representatives. Because you said it was a city issue, and I get it, but you came in, and the most vicious verbal tirade I've ever seen, short of beating the crap out of that person, the people in the room. And I sent all this into you, you have multiple copies of all this, articles, articles written, you've never gotten rid of Rubline, he is a terrible person, in my opinion. I've, I've gone to the RBCU, I've gone to any oversight committee, I've gone to Ken Martin to get rid of this piece of crap, and no one will do anything. You, you know what he's like, he's the Richfield bully, and this whole process is basically a Tom Rubline, Mayor Gattel, that just emphasizes how this thing goes. It's a sick joke. I don't know if you've lost your way, or if you never had a way. You should be ashamed of yourself, all of you. I'm not going away, and I'm going to take what David Butler told me, when he told, when he told me, I said, "I'm going to pound the city with the truth, with the facts." He said, "You go right ahead." So in honor of David Butler, I will continue to pound this city with the truth. I come from Minneapolis with the best, best park system in the country, and I have to come here where you keep destroying this. You have a beautiful park, it's called Bird's Paradise, and you keep building in this fully-built park, and your own documents, it shows it's a fully-built park, and you know that. You tried to put this, this city hall in there against the DNR agreement, and you knew that was a lie, you couldn't do that, it was illegal. You tried to put the Public Works Building in there, too. You could only have it for indoor or outdoor recreational facilities, and you knew that, and you keep trying to shove crap into this, and this isn't the end. You need 300 seats to go in there, you're probably going to throw in a dog park, you're going to throw in all sorts of things. You know, you keep destroying that part, so I'm going to continue. This isn't over for me, I'm just starting to learn how this works. I brought KSDP here.
You, you need to wrap up.
Yep, thank you. So I appreciate that you, you want to hear us talk, but we already have your vote, Mike, you have the email, you said you're going to vote for this tonight. You sent that email to Birgit Johnson. So here I am speaking, but you already have the vote for it because you, so, you know, here it is.
Your time. Elise Morton.
Good evening. So my, my name is Elise Morton, my address is 2852 38th Avenue South. So I am a postdoctoral research biologist at the University of Minnesota, and also the conservation chair for the Audubon Chapter of Minneapolis. My PhD is in biology. So I first visited Veterans Memorial Park this spring and was overwhelmed by the size and beauty of this natural space with 67 acres of protected wetland. I was even more impressed with the incredible abundance and diversity of wildlife, particularly birds in the park. I was honestly quite surprised to learn about plants for development right up against the perimeter of this protected space just meters from the site where herons had nested the previous year. I was even more surprised that the city's naturalists would say that there are limited or no unique wildlife in the area, since this is simply false. Of the 203 bird species sighted in the park are a variety of owl species, American bitterns, raptors, including bald eagles, and Cooper's hawks, and 29 warbler species. That's just one less than in Central Park in New York City, which is famous for warbler diversity during migration. Amongst those birds are several species that are of special conservation concern, including the golden-winged warbler, which is of highest concern, the blue-winged warbler, which is rare and decreasing, the Canada warbler, bay-breasted warbler, Kentucky warbler, and wood thrush, which are all declining. The task, task force was informed that research shows that urban burns are not measur, birds are not measurably affected by noises produced by humans. This may be true, but I've, as I've just listed, there are many non-urban birds residing and using this park. It's been repeatedly demonstrated that non-urban birds are dramatically affected by anthropogenic sounds. 2009 study published in Current Biology entitled "Noise Pollution Changes the Composition of Avian Communities and Species Interactions" shows that anthropogenic sounds can be detrimental to many wildlife species, particularly birds. They show that noise alone reduces nesting species richness and leads to different avian communities. Another study describes how anthropogenic noise is detrimental to birds through direct stress and by interference of their own songs and calls, crucial for predator warnings, territory defense, and mate attraction, resulting in reduced reproductive success. I'm told that an additional claim made by those pro-development at the park is that it's not important to wildlife due to the close proximity of Wood Lake Nature Center, and this is just false.
You need to wrap up, please.
Anyway, there are a number of studies that show that urban green spaces is really important, and the, the more, the better, so I just would advise to use caution in developing the space.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Patricia Taylor.
Patricia Taylor, 6128 15th Avenue South. I would like to say, Madam Mayor, that I feel it is disingenuous to allow clapping when it's for you, but to deny it when it's for something you disapprove of. That is on the record, and everybody here's witnessed it. Now, for what I came to say. Experts say the noise in the proposed bandshell will not negatively affect wildlife in the park. I'm inclined to agree in that I doubt a few hours of music per week directed towards 66th Street will be more of a detriment to wildlife than the constant noise of jet engines over the park every time a cold front passes through. But let us look at the potential indirect damage to wildlife. Number one, geese are frequently feeding in the area around the site for the bandshell. Does the city plan to hire someone to shovel goose poop before every concert? Will the city be liable when a child is attacked by geese protecting their young? The obvious solution is to get rid of the geese. That negatively affects wildlife in the park. Number two, I defy any of you to go sit at the site in dusk in shorts and short sleeves for an hour this time of year without being covered by deet. People won't stay long if the only way they and their children can enjoy a concert is by being slathered down with a neurotoxic chemical. The solution, eliminate mosquito breeding in the adjacent wetlands. If you limit or eliminate what is at the bottom of the food chain, you will negatively affect the frogs, the fish, and thereby the egrets and heron who feed off of them. This bandshell is contentious, and I believe its supporters have a political stake in seeing it be a success in the face of the opposition. The only way to make this project a success is to do what it takes to eliminate the inevitable natural problems that will arise. For the bandshell to be a success, wildlife must inevitably be harmed. This proposed bandshell will be of benefit to the community 20 to 30 days a year tops, if it doesn't rain. The nature is of benefit to the community 365 days a year. To sacrifice nature for the bandshell is a poor investment at best, a travesty at worst. As for this silent majority the proponents talk about, there is no silent majority. If there were, more contributions would have been garnered. What we have is silent apathy. Truth be told, most residents couldn't care less one way or the other. We have a small group of supporters and a small group of detractors, with most residents not caring. Why spend the money when the majority of people don't care? As for the bandshell detractors, why don't you have the courage to call for a boycott of Richfield liquor stores? All it would take is standing in front of the stores with a sign that says, "Go to Total Wine in Edina, it's cheaper." Why? Because your base is as small as the supporters' base.
Please wrap up, please wrap up your time.
Thank you. Please, don't, don't bow to this craziness. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Myers.
I'm Susan Myers, and we have heard at different times, people, and I have been one of the people, encouraging consideration of working with the Lindell Gardens development. By the way, the Met Council has approved the amendments to their plan, so they're going forward. There is something, though, that I don't think has been known by anyone on the council or on the Bandstand Task Force. A little over a year ago, I was meeting with the developers, there had been all sorts of claims about that development. I wanted to find out for sure what was going on, the claims all turned out to be false. We were talking about what it would look like to have a partnership between a public entity and private developers, and the developers were throwing out various ideas, perhaps the city could be the primary tenant of the place. Or, one idea was that the Cornerstone Group would build the bandstand at Lindell Gardens, would maintain it, would deal with all of the daily tasks, and we, the City of Richfield, could own the stage and the land on which it sat. I have winced every time I have heard people talking about Lindell Gardens and making false claims about it. For example, that the stage will be a concrete slab. That is not true. I was here when the plans were developed, were shown to the City Council, and that was not part of the plan. People have claimed that it wouldn't be large enough for the Richfield Symphonic Band, or that donations could not be made to it. False. But some members of Bandstand Task Force were to meet with them and find out how it would look to work together. They came back and said to the City Council that if we, the city, were to work with Lindell Gardens, there would be no roof and we would have an annual fee. False. That was never a consideration. That was what would happen if we don't cooperate with Lindell Gardens. So all of these false claims have been terribly embarrassing, because I knew that those who are claiming those things were ruining a marvelous opportunity for us all. And indeed, one of the developers later said, "No, it wouldn't work for us to own it because the city would then charge Lindell Gardens to use the stage they had built," and I can certainly see that that would happen. It has been an embarrassment, but all of the studies that have been done by the city have pointed to Lindell Gardens as the place to have a bandstand. The feasibility study, which has often been used to say that there's widespread support for a bandstand or a bandshell in Veterans Park. It consulted .0056% of the population, so I don't think it was widespread anything, quite frankly, but it concluded that nothing should go forward without finding out what was going on with Lindell Gardens.
Please wrap up.
The site selection survey also said Lindell Gardens was the best, concerts in the park. There was a question saying, "Would you return here for a concert?" 70% of the people at Lindell Gardens said either yes or probably versus 58% at Veterans Park. All of these things.
Time, time, time. I'm sorry. Thank you for coming. Maureen Scaglio.
Good evening. Been in, at 6410 Washburn Avenue South. Been a Richfield resident for a long, long time, planning commission.
Maureen, excuse me, could you speak?
We can't hear you.
Well, I'll try, I have a cold, so, I'll do my best. Veterans Park is classified as a community park, not as a neighborhood park. It's such, it is an appropriate site for the community structures such as a bandshell. Veterans is not a nature center. With a degree in biology and as someone who reads extensively about the environment and wildlife, I strongly believe that locating the bandshell along 66th Street and on and wildlife, I strongly believe that locating the bandshell along 66th Street and on a line with the pool and the ice arena will not harm wildlife any more than the pool when it's filled with screaming kids, the parking lot, fireworks on the Fourth of July, and something that I was personally responsible for, because I was chair of the street dance for a number of years, rock and roll bands. And especially the noise from airplanes and traffic on the Crowstown and 66th Street. The wildlife in that park have already adapted to an urban setting. Most Sunday evenings in the summer, you will find me over at Centennial Lakes, listening to the Edina band concerts. I have observed at every concert, birds flying around and chirping merrily. One particular occasion last summer, a bird perched on the top of the bandshell and during the quiet section of music, actually sang along with the band. It was really a sweet moment. The people were smiling, and the conductor thanked the bird for his addition to the music. Cost. As a member of a hometown high school band, I performed in City Park Band every week two months of the summer. If a city of 3,000 could build a beautiful bandshell, I believe a city of 34,000 should be able to do so. And I don't really believe the proposed amenities on Lyndale near Lakewins will happen anytime soon. Embarrassment. As I said, I'm a regular attendee at the band concerts at Centennial Lakes in the summer and at Innenborough Indoor Park during the year. Last summer, I decided to attend one of these community bands at a Richfield concert, and I was embarrassed. Musicians sitting on folding chairs on the grass, especially those with tubas, probably had to move around.
Wrap it up, please.
I'm sorry.
You need to wrap up, please.
Okay. Worse was the fact there was no physical structure between the musicians and the attending. A young girl kept interrupting the conductor as he was trying to explain the selections before the band played them. I kept thinking, "Is this the best Richfield can do?"
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Is it Tom Zartha? Is that right? Z-A-R-T-A?
Sarth.
Sarth? Sarth, I'm sorry, I can't read your name. Sorry, pastor.
He's a pastor.
Yes, I know he's pastor.
Tom Zarth, I'm a pastor at Oak Grove Lutheran Church on 70th and Lyndale. I only speak of what I know. I'm a supporter of this for a number of reasons, but I would highlight two. Three times in recent years, seven congregations in Richfield rented out the picnic shelter in Veterans Park for a worship in the park on Sunday morning. The venue was not great for that kind of an event, but I think they were wonderfully successful. Positive experience for church leaders working together, members of our congregations gathered in the same space for a change, and hopefully the few pastors by who came around to see what was up had a good time. The idea of having a bandshell, which might well be free of other events on Sunday mornings, is an extremely appealing idea to a number of local pastors that I've talked to since I first heard of this idea. Individual congregations could take turns leading worship experiences in that beautiful place, the way they do at Lake Harriet and Minnehaha Park. We could do things together as well. I believe that strong-faith communities who work together cooperatively contribute to the well-being of the whole community. They have a place where people who are not a part of any church might feel welcome to come for a time of reflection and goodwill and be an asset to the city. The other reason I speak in favor is that a community that is as beautifully diverse as ours should always be on the lookout for ways that people of different cultural backgrounds and experiences can find ways to connect with each other, understand one another more deeply, and I believe that the arts are one of the easiest access points to doing that sort of understanding. Imagine the different kinds of music, dance, poetry, whatever, that might be staged on a venue like that, and what a positive impact that kind of new understanding and appreciation might bring. If we never held a single worship service at that place, I would still be at the front of the line, supporting the completion, for that reason alone. Thank you.
Thank you. Are you coming in here, stead?
I'm Haven Elwell, and I'm speaking on her behalf.
Okay, just make sure that mic's moved, so we can hear you. Thank you.
Okay. I'm actually going to give what I wrote first, and then hers, because I wrote.
Well, you have three minutes for the whole time. Just go.
Okay. I'm Haven, and I'll be a senior at the School of Environmental Studies this year. I believe that nature needs to be preserved and protected, for it cannot protect itself. Specifically, I believe that we have more than enough man-made structures within Veterans Park. Humans already cause an immeasurable amount of damage with our self-oriented lifestyles. Most of the time, I don't feel as though enough consideration is made before we build another building. Today, I am asking us, the community of Richfield, to think this through. I fear another building will chase away wildlife, destroy the land, and only take the experience that we, take away the experience we are currently able to enjoy. Is it worth it to fall through with something like this just because it makes our lives more convenient? We cannot afford to continue to overlook this, especially within our own community. We, as a people, already occupy the vast majority of Richfield, so we don't need to take up any more room by insisting on the structure being permanent. Society is constantly whispering in our ears, saying, "We need more of this, and we need more of that." So I understand why we put up enormous buildings and factories to make bigger and better things, but that's just it, things. And we let these things control us until we don't even have the time to look at nature and what's going on right in front of us. Not only are we overlooking nature, but pushing it aside. Why? Because we think it will always be there. We are wrong. We are going to learn that while there may be, while they may not be instantaneous, negative consequences will follow our actions. One day, I'd like to be able to walk my kids across the street to Veterans Park and enjoy the same natural beauty I can today. I can't make you believe what I believe, or want what I want, or see the world how I do. My intention and hope of coming here today is only to ask that we think of the future and not just the present, because in reality, we don't need another building. What we really need is right in front of us.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor and council members, thank you for having us. As my part of the dialogue, I'm going to give up anything that I might say, and instead I'd like to give you some excerpts of statements that a few friends of mine have given, and they were not able to be here tonight. First is Ben Hoyer, who's the instrumental music director at the Richfield High School. Says, "I think that a bandshell can be a tremendous asset to the community. I grew up in Worthington, Minnesota. Going to Wednesday evening concerts as I grew up, and then playing in them in high school and college, are some of my favorite memories from home. With numerous band, orchestra, jazz ensembles, chorus groups in the area, I believe the Richfield can establish an outstanding summer concert series for its residents." Another is from David Melcher, a member of the Richfield Rotary Club. Incidentally, the Richfield Rotary Club was a big part of the sponsorship that raised the $75,000 from the community. David says, "I love music. I would like to attend concerts in the Richfield at the city's very own bandshell, and I'm in favor of the bandshell project. An amenity like a bandshell brings value to the community. It may be a value that is hard to calculate, but it makes the city a place not only to live, but worthwhile place to be living in." A third is from Dick Burt, director of the Richfield Symphonic Band. He writes, "I would like to add my support for the bandshell that is proposed for Veterans Park. I believe that the hard work and research done by the committee has shown that this is the best spot for the bandshell to be placed. I believe that the positive benefits of having a bandshell in the community are many. I have seen them firsthand in Roseville, where I grew up, and in Moose Lake, Minnesota, where I taught music for over 30 years. In both places, the bandshell did not take away from the bucolic atmosphere in the parks' areas where they were placed, but in my opinion, they added even more to the positive and relaxing mood and enjoyment the parks provided. Both the Roseville and Moose Lake bandshells were designed to fit in with the park environments, as I strongly feel that this Richfield bandshell would do that. I believe that this shall be something that the town can be proud of. We are looking forward to performing in this great space and listening to the beautiful music in the great outdoors area of Veterans Park." Richard Burt, director of the Richfield Symphonic Band and Richfield Swing Band. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Haven Elwell. Oh, you've already spoke once. Yeah, I'm sorry. Okay. All right.
Hello. I would like to take a few moments to say that my husband and I, as Richfield residents and business owners, support the bandshell project. We view this project for what it is, a community asset, built in a community park, that is meant to draw more people in to enjoy our wonderful park. Last year, after hearing over and over again that nobody in Richfield supported this project, I started a Facebook page called "I Support the Richfield, Minnesota Bandshell." It quickly grew to almost 1,400 followers of the page. The page has had good interaction with residents of the community, who liked or commented on various posts that were made. Some had questions about the project, some voiced their concerns, but the general reaction was that the bandshell is yet another wonderful amenity to Vets Park. People are excited to hear music in the park or see school performances held there, in addition to the possibility of private rentals, such as using it as a venue for weddings or other ceremonies. Here are a few comments made by people on the Facebook page, so you can have an idea on the community response I've seen about the project. Kelly Freeman said, "I definitely support having a bandshell in Vets Park, and so do all of my neighbors that know about it." Barry Williams said, "I do think the bandshell in Vets Park is an important addition that will benefit our local schools, bands, and community groups. I would absolutely love to attend a Memorial Day celebration at the Honoring All Veterans Memorial, followed by a short walk to a concert by a military band at the new bandshell." Shannon Porel said, "It's so cool to see the community gather together at Vets Park for the farmer's market and the events at the Honoring All Vets Memorial, and now the community can come together for a free music show from students and community bands. So fun." Zara Robertson said, "Hit up the Richfield Pool, play some mini golf, walk the trails, and then grab some ice cream and experience a summer concert at the bandshell, all at Vets Park. The kiddos and I can't wait." Sharon Carter-Molin said, "Thank you. I totally support the bandshell. A great community idea." Clearly, there is community support for this project.
Thank you.
Heidi Geibor, 6915 Wentworth. "I love music. However, I believe that the use of this site is not an appropriate use for A, B, C, and D reasons. A: air traffic noise. Why is it a good idea to build this under a flight path?
Shh, quiet, please.
B: bog and wetlands. Being built on a bog, the structure and its surroundings will have no integrity. The ecology of this environment will change. C: common sense and central location. Common sense tells us that a more central location would better serve those who will attend, and it will draw more people. And D: dearth of donations. Residents are speaking with their pocketbooks and don't want this stage built. What was meant to be a privately funded endeavor has now become a city-funded project. Perhaps the entire concept needs to be rethought." Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor and council members. I guess I wrote this out, and I said, "I don't get it. I honestly don't get it." There's no reason, or no question, about approving the final action before you do this evening. While the citizens' task force has not been as vocal as editorials, we have diligently and quietly followed the prescribed process in place per the law and per city charter to plan for a performance stage in Veterans Park. The site plan's long-range and comprehensive plan objective is, are there, is consistent with the zoning code, takes into account the noise to the neighboring area, and creates a harmonious relationship to the adjacent nature center. We now have an aesthetic rendering that fits very nicely into the community park, and we have held open meetings, allowed comments at various times, and documented our discussions, enacted important issues and concerns voiced by the citizens. We have followed a principle of what good government should be. We have compromised on various features of the project to benefit the community at large. And we will build it, not to exceed the budget allotted. I could go through a series of actions that have taken place. We talked about the initial planning dates back to 1985. Bandshell is part of the Vision's 2020, completed in 2001, has been included in the City-Cap Improvement Plan for several years. And in 2011, a committee was formed to look at the fundraising feasibility, potential sites for a bandshell, other design factors. The Community Services Commission conducted an open public meeting on it in December 2012, and to present recommendations, the Bandshell Committee, to the public. In January 2014, the city council held a study session on the subject, and on February 11th, 2014, approved a resolution declaring Vets Park as a site. Public notice was given in all cases. These were all points where the idea could have been shot down, and all citizens had a chance, along the process, to put input and discuss, and so, majority has spoken, and this project should be completed as planned. In closing, community parks provide open space for a variety of activities and encourage and welcome everyone to enjoy the outdoors in their community. It builds community. The performance stage addition is one small footprint in Veterans Park that will encourage more people to get outside, see a performance at the park, walk the trails, and enjoy nature and life in Richfield. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And that concludes our community input time. So we closed that portion, and I will turn it back over to Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I heard from seven people today that were supporting the bandshell. One individual just sent the email to myself and the mayor, and so I will make sure that, you know, that other council members get to look at that email. This is, this park has been designated, not a neighborhood park, not a, you know, it's been designated as a community park. That's why we have, you know, the ice rink and miniature golf and the pavilion, you know, because it's been designated as- because it's been designated as a community park. Now, if you take a look at, in terms of parkland, you know, and you compare us with other comparable communities, you know, over eleven percent of the city is devoted to parkland. In Crystal, only six percent of the city, of the parks, they only have six percent. Golden Valley has eight percent. St. Louis Park has eight percent. Brooklyn Center, six percent. Edina, twelve percent. So, you know, the bandshell is going to, at Veterans Park, will occupy a space approximately forty-six feet times thirty-five feet. In this spacious, one-hundred-and-eight acre park. This represents a footprint of less than four percent of one acre. We have really worked hard, and I think both opponents and proponents, and I think your voice has been heard. And I suggest that, you know, to anybody else that, please, don't get personal, you know. I mean, I know Tom Rublin, and Tom Rublin has worked in this community for many, many years. You can name all the contributions that he has made. And for, and I can see, you know, fine, ask him to... Ask, we could displace him and put him, you know, outside of the task force or whatever. But to go after him in a different, in his personal life, you know, to go to the DFL, Senate District, to go to the State DFL, to go to the Richfield Bloomington Credit Union, to oust him, it's, you know, it's heartbreaking. And that was, I don't think that's necessary because that has nothing to do with a bandshell. So you're displeased with him, fine. But, you know, there's different ways to tackle it. And I am really disappointed, you know, because I really appreciate almost everybody that spoke. Well, a lot of folks that spoke are very much involved in the community. But no one will ever be, I think, he's the champion of our community and for the betterment of our community. In that light, I will renew my motion that we approve the resolution allowing construction of a community bandshell at eight-hundred-sixty-sixth Street East Veterans Memorial Park.
And I will renew my second. Is there a discussion? Councilmember Howard first.
Sure, thanks. First, I too want to thank people who came tonight on both sides of this issue. I do think that people come to this issue from a place of conviction on both sides, and there is passion on both sides. And I think that comes from a concern from the city and, you know, what you want your city to look like. As most of you probably know, this is an issue that, when a lot of the work began, predates my time on the council. I began this January. And the previous city council made a decision to approve funding for a bandshell in Veterans Park. And over the last summer and fall, I talked with people across the city about this issue. And in the fall, you know, I told folks that I didn't want to continue to reargue this point, but I did want to move forward in a respectful way. And I've continued to listen to folks and work on this issue, and that really remains. And I do want to mention, you know, over the last summer and fall, I door-knocked throughout the entire city twice as the at-large council member. I thought it was very important to try to get across the whole city and talk to as many people as I could. And I heard from a lot of people who were supportive of the bandshell. A lot of young families who talked about the value of this amenity to bring their family to a concert in the park. And I did talk with plenty of folks also that had concerns about the size and scope of the bandshell, about open space and green space. And from, especially from nearby neighbors, wondering, you know, what's this going to look like? How's this going to affect me and my home? And those were some of the things that I've been working to gather information and understand, and I just want to speak to a few of them. First, and I think this is an important one. As first envisioned, the bandshell for Veterans Park had a price tag of, you know, over a million dollars. And when I was initially talking with folks out at the doors, especially then, I heard a lot of concern about the size and scope. And, you know, you'd talk with folks, and boy, a million-dollar bandshell. And I think people had this idea that we were talking about some monstrosity, you know, a Viking Stadium type of issue that was viewable from outer space, you know. And really, that's not what we have here in this plan. What we have here is a price tag that's cut by more than half, and I think a very modest bandshell before us. And I think that's fitting for Richfield and fitting of the location for Veterans Park. And I think it's very important that the city be clear with the public that we went from this million to four-hundred-thousand price tag. And I think that the city needs to say that these are the funds that have been appropriated for the city and no more. In fact, you know, I'd like to bring forward a motion after this one, if it would be appropriate, to cap the amount of city funds for the bandshell at what has already been appropriated. And I guess I'd have just a question for city staff. Would that be appropriate after this motion, or when would a motion like that be in order?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Howard. Assuming this goes forward and is approved, the next item on the agenda will be for an architect's agreement relating to the bandshell. Since that is related to funding and an expenditure, it might be more appropriate in that context.
All right, thank you. Yeah, I know folks have said that the Bandshell Committee and folks aren't looking to come back to the city for more resources. I think we should take the step to be clear with the public that what's been allotted for the bandshell at this point has gotten us to a plan for a modest bandshell, and then we should move forward with it. And I think that helps build in some certainty. I do want to speak a little bit to the green space issue, which I know proponents have talked a lot about. And I know those proponents wouldn't probably agree with this, but I think that this specific site plan does respond to some of those concerns. The placement of the structure is on an area that's mowed grass. It's not on a wetland. It's not on top of a path or smack in the middle of a space. And I particularly like the fact that there's no back to the bandshell, and you can see light go through to the nature in the back. And again, I think it speaks to some modesty and respect for the nature that's there. And then I did also want to comment and speak to the folks that live right near the area because I have heard concerns from those folks. And although we're talking about a bandshell for the entire city to use and enjoy, there's no question that a bandshell right here, you know, if folks live right on Sixty-S sixth and some of those areas, you have concerns about how the bandshell is going to be used and operated. And I think you all deserve a voice and a city that will listen to you in terms of how a bandshell is used and operated. And there's all kinds of things in terms of sound levels and timing, duration, you know, frequency. These are things that I think the city needs to be very respectful and listen to the folks nearby and work with you on that because this is in an area that's close to you, and I think that's something we can do. I'm very supportive of the planning commission moving forward with a proposal to make sure there's city staff on site for concerts to monitor sound levels, and I think that's a way to address that as well. So in closing, you know, I've heard from, and we heard tonight, from folks that are, would not like to see any bandshell at all, folks that think that a bandshell is a great idea. And the current plans that we have before us for a modest bandshell, to me, feels like a landing place, albeit one that I think some folks on both sides of the issue might not be completely satisfied with, but one that really allows us to move forward. And to the question of why Veterans Park, it is the destination park for Richfield. It's where our city really does come to gather for big celebrations in our community. When you think about Richfield, one of the places your mind goes right to is Veterans Park. And I think that's something people who are supporters or opposed to this, part of what's driving it is you're envisioning what this is going to look like in the bandshell. And I've tried to do that too in coming to my decision. And what I really envision is a place where families can come with their kids to watch a magic show or an arts presentation, where our high school choir or band can come and where our community members can watch and have pride in their schools and their kids. And, you know, I envision laughter and smiles, and I think that this can be a positive addition to Richfield, to move forward, to make our city attractive to families and to everyone in Richfield. And that's why I plan to support this motion. Thank you.
Councilmember Fitz Henry.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I'd like to correct something. It was stated that in the master plan, there is a fifteen-hundred-seat bandshell. It says amphitheater, and I would remind people that there is still an amphitheater behind the ice arena. If you go look, it hasn't been utilized. The, I'm not against the bandshell, but for me, it's location, location, location. You hear this in real estate? And the problem is, I'm your representative on the Noise Oversight Committee, and you look at me for, to give you direction in what you should do in uses in various facilities. I would really be almost laughed out of a meeting if I said that the bandshell is a compatible land use being under the flight path of Minneapolis International Airport. In fact, not too long ago, we were having discussions. City of Minneapolis was trying to get the flight pass changed so they wouldn't go over to the Lake Harriet Bandshell. And they are still fighting that, and their concern is more on the arrival. Well, the planes are higher and are at idle, and they're also further away from the airport itself. You know, it doesn't make sense to put a building in an area where we mitigate houses and we put in windows and air conditioning and that so we can't hear the sound. And if you talk to the residents in the area, they can't enjoy the outdoors during high-peak times. They can't hold a conversation on a phone. And that is my concern with this particular location. The other one is the restroom facilities. I don't think you can convince me that fifteen-hundred people, or if they show up to this event, are going to find the restrooms. They got to walk over to the ice arena or the pool or to the facility over at the park. Well, we've all experienced in the Fourth of July, it usually is the closest fence. The other issue I have is the neighborhood concerns. I understand their concerns with the amplification that goes into the neighborhoods. We've all experienced, and even from where I live, quite a ways away from the actual park, we hear the bands that are played in the enclosure over there where they have the market. And it's okay if I enjoy it, you know, I don't mind it too much, but we don't get a choice of bands sometimes. So it may be a time where I may not enjoy it. The issue with parking, you're not going to convince me of. You know I voiced my opinion when we got the magicians in for the, you know, semi-pro hockey, that we didn't have enough parking spots. And it's proof because it's easier for me to walk to the game than to park at the game. They go into the neighborhoods and that. We were kind of promised on that second sheet of ice when it was built that they were going to put more parking in, and it hasn't happened. Hearing from the neighbors that, when is the extra parking going in? Now we're going to add the bandshell in there, and we're going to have parking. I know you can kind of mitigate the times, but there's still going to be hockey practices. There's still going to be things going on. And you really can be able to control the amount of people that come in there. And my fear is they'll go into the neighborhoods, and I don't want to see signs in the neighborhoods that say, "No parking here from certain time to certain time" because we can't regulate what parking is happening there. Of Third and Fourth of July, if you just go over there and look at the park, watch how far and how deep it goes into the neighborhoods for that event. We don't mind it for maybe one or two days a year, but my concern is the constant going into the neighborhoods. The pool events lately have had an awesome turnout for the tournaments and that. Again, they're parking in front of my house, and it's so far away that, you know, if I want to enjoy it, I'm going to walk down. I have a concern about the maintenance that he talked about. We're using, you know, materials. I'm not so concerned about the materials, but I am concerned that we're putting up a structure we haven't really thought about. How much maintenance it's going to cost the city to maintain this? We are great at building buildings, and sometimes we got to think about, okay, even in the park structures where we have the play features and that, how are we going to maintain them? How long are they going to last, and what happens when they go downhill? How are we going to maintain them? I know you've received support letters from everything, from people saying they support it and that. My question is where they live. The people in the neighborhood are getting tired of tolerating a lot of things that happen over there, and that's what I'm hearing from my community. It's the people in the neighborhood that think it ought to be shared with the west side of town. Everything seems to be on the east side of town. In fact, when the Fourth of July celebration first started, if you go back in the notes, they were going to have it on the east side and the west side and kind of balance it out. And it's never happened on the west side. So, you know, when's their turn? So, you know, going through the whole thing, if it were in another location, I could support this. But I think it's a good idea, but in the wrong location. So I will not support this.
Thank you. And I want to just follow up on some comments, mostly around some of the Lyndale Garden site area. And, you know, it's equally noisy over at the Lyndale Garden site, and maybe even slightly more noisy over there with some of the traffic patterns over there. But the parking and the size and the seating and the ownership were pretty big issues around that area. And that's one of the reasons it wasn't chosen when the task force... And I trust the task force really looked at a lot of this. I participated in some of those, and I certainly read any comments that came through. I think that all of us did. I also think that the donation things that people have brought up is that we were... David has really fast-tracked this project, trying to get it started sooner rather than later. If we waited, would we have more donations? Possibly. We could go grant writing. We could do a lot of things. But he really wanted to see something happen happen soon. And it's not just about the city funding because there have been substantial donations. And not only just donations of cash, but donations of services from several different entities. And I appreciate everything that they have. I also like the design too that's open, as you do, Councilmember Howard. It's bird-safe. And, you know, after we heard about what happened downtown with the glass issue on the stadium, I'm glad that you're very respectful of that. I don't have a problem with capping city funds. And I think that the bandshell too, those who do support it, could make more donations if they choose to. And as far as for maintenance, there may be some maintenance, but there's maintenance issues with all our stuff. With our playground equipment, we have to be replaced every so many years. With some of our shelters that we use and our farmer's market buildings. There's going to be maintenance in any building we have as a city, and that's just part of running a city. So, you know, and I've heard people too, I was outdoor knocking just last season too, and it was both sides. It was both sides about that. And I also know that the Autobahn was called in and asked to comment on this. And they had no comment that they thought that there was a problem with having a, where we were designating for the bandshell, that it was not going to interfere with things. They said that if anything was going to be more impactful, it would have been the noise from the airport and the cars and the people, and that... from the airport and the cars and the people, and that has not shown to be the case. When we had the birding event from Woodlake Nature Center, and some of the people went over there, they're still spotting some of those fabulous species that no other park can tout, and I, that's wonderful. I'm glad to hear that people can come and enjoy. I often see birders out there when I'm at the farmer's market and talk to them. I'm inclined to, I think this is a great bandshell. I think this is, is what the city, I think the city is, as Pastor Tom Zar said, I think this brings people together. I'm about bringing people together, especially diversity in our community, and I'm in support of the, of the bandshell. With that, I will call for the vote. I'll do a roll call. May we have a roll call, starting with Garcia? You need to have the mic on?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Gotow?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitz Henry?
No.
The motion passes.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Would it be appropriate to make a motion at this time on the, on the?
Why don't you do it with my next item?
Sure.
Because people might want to, we could, we could take a break for a couple of minutes here while people leave. Yeah, yeah, we can take a break. Everybody wants to take a break. Anybody wants to take a break?
Yeah, I can. I'm going to do this.
How are you? It's good to see you. Councilmember Garcia? Didn't I just go down? The social butterfly, would the social butterfly please come to the dais?
Thank you. I'm going to reconvene the meeting after the break. Thank you. I want to thank a lot of people for just coming in, whether you were for or against. It was nice to see people really engaged in their community, and I appreciate people coming and being part of the process, and that's always worthwhile. We learn a lot, and we learn a lot about each other, so I appreciate that. Next is item number eight. This is consideration of the agreement between the City of Richfield and David Laner, Architect for the Professional Services in the Design of the Community Bandshell. On June 13th, 2015, the Bandshell Committee passed a motion to recommend city council to enter into an agreement with David Laner Architects to prepare final drawings and specifications and construction documents for the bandshell project, and to perform the construction phase of this service. The Bandshell Task Force was initially working with Thompson-Retlow BTR to develop a conceptual design for the bandshell. The task force reached a dead end earlier this year with the discovery of bad soils in the proposed site in the Veterans Memorial Park, bringing the project over budget. The task force then began looking for ways to reduce the project costs, including redesign and finding a qualified architect and engineer to perform the needed work for less money. Local architect David Laner was selected for his past experience in designing bandshells and his favorable fee. Thank you very much, we appreciate that. David Laner has more than 20 years of experience and has recently designed a bandshell for the City of Victoria. The attached contract outlines the basic services, including schematic design, phase design development, phase construction documents, bidding phase, and construction phase for the sum of $30,000. Percent of the construction cost are about $59,674, including the cost of their conceptual fee of $18,000. The total projected budget of $400,000 anticipated project schedules as follows. Council consideration of the architect contract for June 23rd, construction documents completed July 21st, bidding opening August 13th, council consideration construction contract September 8th, construction began September 9th, installation completion by November 20th. So at this time, I will make a motion to approve the agreement between the City of Richfield and David Laner to perform professional services in the design of a community bandshell in the amount of $30,000, and I believe you have an amendment to that. May I have a second first?
Second.
Second. And Councilmember?
And I will say this, and then, correct me if I could use, you know, better language, but my amendment would be to cap the resources of the City of Richfield in which they will expend to build the bandshell in Veterans Park at the level of funds that have already been appropriated.
Okay, so for on the first mo, on the first item, all those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. On the second item, all those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. We have a contractor. Thank you very much for, for coming. Are there any questions or any comments from anybody as we move on to selection of the developer?
You know, I just appreciate that Councilmember Howard brought up, you know, it's, it's, you know, supporting, not, not appropriating more money. We've said it before, but it's, it's good that now it's official. We have passed that resolution, and I think it speaks well of, you know, our, of what we want to do for the right reason.
Thank you.
On the next item, number nine, is consideration of a developer selection for the Cedar Point Housing Area Development. In 2004, the Cedar Point Housing Area was designed by the city council as a redevelopment project area, including within the larger Cedar Corridor redevelopment. The Cedar Point Housing Area, bounded by 63rd Street to the north, 65th Street to the south, 16th Avenue to the west, and Richfield Parkway to the east, is guided in the City of Richfield's 2008 comprehensive plan for high-density multi-housing, calling for a minimum of 24 units per acre. The zoning of the area was changed in 2010 to reflect this designation. Over the past several months, a number of developers have approached the city, offering development proposals for the Cedar Point Housing Area. The developers were invited to present their proposals to the city council and the Richfield Housing and Redevelopment Authority at a work session on April 14th, 2015. Given the large number of proposals, the council and HRA directed staff to gather additional information from the developers, and subsequently held a second work session, May 12th, 2015, to further discuss the proposals. And on May 26th, a special meeting of this city council and HRA was held to rank the preliminary development proposals. Staff subsequently tallied the rankings and conducted project reference verifications on the top two development teams. A memo, that was memo number 48, was distributed to the city council and HRA on June 4th, 2015, summarizing the rankings and reference information. The three proposals that ranked highest are as follows. Number one, Boyclaire Corporation, Cedar Point 2. Number two, Anderson Company, Cedar Point Villas. Number three, Christie Olsen, Gary Tucci, Cedar Point Residential Living. All references received for the top two candidates were positive and reflect the development team with the ability and integrity to complete the developed project. Upon selection of the preferred preliminary proposal, staff will begin drafting a development agreement with the developer. The developer will also be asked to begin the development process by commencing a comprehensive public input undertaking to refine their proposal in such a way that incorporates the community's needs and desires to the fullest extent possible. At this time, I will make a motion to accept the preliminary proposal of the preferred developer team, Boyclaire Corporation, and two, to direct staff to draft a development agreement with Boyclaire Corporation for the development of Cedar Point Housing Area.
Second.
I see that we have our developers here. Would you like to come up and speak and talk about the proposal? Please introduce yourself.
Good evening. I'm Lori Boyclaire, President of Boyclaire Corporation. We are thrilled to be awarded Cedar Point 2 Housing. It's such a wonderful area, the redevelopment location, and the market study that was done by Maxfield Research really calls out for this type of housing within the City of Richfield. We've been in business for almost 42 years, so we have done luxury housing, affordable housing, retail, and mixed use, and we're, we're just thrilled to be able to embark on this project. We have, tentatively have meetings scheduled with staff to start meeting and start a neighborhood meeting. I think we're going to probably do it sometime right after the HRA meeting at the end of July. So we welcome all of the comments from the community and its residents, and we look forward to being able to serve you. Do you have any questions?
Does anyone have questions? No. Please, Councilmember?
Maybe you could kind of explain to the audience, if you don't know how long it's going to take for phases, because that's the big question you get on the east side.
Yeah, we're anticipating if the schedule goes accordingly, and you know, there's sometimes there ends up being little blips between HUD and vacation schedules and things, that there will be a construction start the fall of 2016. So there would be a construction completion probably late spring, early summer 2017.
Which is the entire conflict, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Depending on market and how well the purchase of the homes go, that might be phase two, and the apartment building being phase one, but the apartment building, we contemplate being done there late spring, early summer 2017.
That's the comment I heard from the east side. They had to put up with Target, Home Depot, and that, and they would like this thing to be completed continuously rather than having, you know, it split into years or whatever, so I'm encouraged to hear that you're going to move forward.
We would prefer to have it done in one phase and move forward accordingly. Any other questions?
No, I'm really excited about the mix of townhomes for sale and then the apartments. A lot of people are really excited. I know there are people who are looking forward to those townhomes, they want to move in, so I think you have a market here pretty well sold out.
Yeah, we agree, and we really, we really are very appreciative. Thank you.
Thank you.
We look forward to it.
Saying that there's a motion and a second, all those in favor, excuse me, Council?
Madam Mayor, I just wanted to voice support as well. I think that this is a project that can move forward and make our city more inviting to young professionals and new families, and offer something that I, I think could be a positive thing. And I just wanted to thank the public, those that weighed in on the multiple proposals. I think it's great that we had so many, and speaks to that Richfield is really on the rise, and the, it was great to see such public engagement in terms of these proposals, and I think that really helped all the council and the planning folks, you know, come to what they thought was the best project to move forward, and it's just exciting, and so I wanted to voice my support.
Yeah. Councilmember?
And I would really thank staff. The people over there were kind of sitting in limbo tonight. They're going to know our decision, can plan for the future. There's a lot of them were saying, "Do I fix the roof? Do I fix the railing? Do I put a new garage door on?" And I think we're, we're giving the answer tonight, and so I appreciate staff, council, and everybody moving forward so we don't have people on limbo.
And I just want to say that, you know, I, Councilmember Fitz Henry, I took your, your ideas about what you thought about it very seriously, because you have the, the pulse of that east side, and I think, you know, you know what those folks really want out there, and so I listened very carefully to what was in your area and what those people really wanted and needed, and I, thank you, you represent your area very well.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. City manager's report.
You know, Madam Chair, I was going to suggest that, that at our next City Council meeting, that we ask our city manager to perhaps, he can find out more information about that $10 million, and, and he can tell us about it a lot more, because I think everything's still in the works.
It's a plus.
So I would appreciate that.
At the next council meeting, or now, or when?
Well, by when, when you can get all the information, when it would be available.
Yeah, whenever, right.
Yeah, fair enough. I do have a quick point, though, for city manager report. We're looking at doing a mid-year look at our goal. And, you know, we've made quite a bit of progress, and I know that there's a council desire to take a look at that. And so I was thinking of scheduling that prior to the council meeting on July 28th. And so the real question is, how much time are you going to really need to do that? And probably a typical six o'clock kind of start, or 5:30 start, might not do it. So how much time do you, do you as a city council think you're going to need? And what's your availability on that night?
And this was something that I had actually brought up to staff, thinking that if we did that goal-setting session, but we never, we just gathered ideas and everything. We need to hear about what they're doing about them. We may come up with more and everything, and so I said, perhaps we wanted an earlier start time, a 4:30, a 5 o'clock. And I, I know that there are some folks here who still work, so I'm trying to be mindful and schedule ahead.
I think that's a time that actually would work for me to do that, so.
Okay. So what do we think, about 4:30?
Sure.
4:30? 4:30?
Okay, and we'll, okay.
4:30 it is.
And 4:30, so 4:30 study session then on July 28th, and we'll certainly find some low-budget kind of dinner we can bring in for councilmembers and staff.
Hot dogs on the grill in bed.
Salad.
Yeah.
Are you guys cooking for us?
Not really.
No, I didn't think that was going to happen.
We could show up at Loaves and Fishes.
But it, but it won't put anybody in the hospital, that's a good thing. No, that's it, that's all I have.
Okay. I just want to remind everybody, too, that at the Fourth of July, on Fourth of July night, we're actually going to have a beer garden, and the Fourth of July Committee does need some folks to volunteer for that. So if you volunteered in the past, and maybe you didn't go to the street dance, would you consider, please, calling up the Fourth of July, or sending them an email and volunteering? You can do an hour and a half is all over there, just to help serve some beer and make that a very nice event. This is in lieu of the carnival, this, we're hoping that this kind of fills the gap financially in lieu of the carnival. So we really do need to do this, this kind of a thing, and I think it's a, it's a good idea. Again, we don't allow other people to bring alcohol into there, so you would have to purchase it onsite in their cups. So that's one of the things that we just want to stress, but we could use your volunteer help for any of these processes. I appreciate that. Claims and payroll?
So moved.
Discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Seeing no open forum, I will call this meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.